Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call to order the Joint City Council HRA Planning Commission Work Session. It is June 21st at 5:45 PM, and we have two items on our agenda. One is the introduction and preliminary discussion of future plans for the Minnesota Independence Community College and or Independence College and Community, excuse me, and discussion of a new development proposal for the property at 10166 Street East. And so I would say we probably have about half an hour for each item. So I'm going to turn it over to Community Development Director Stark. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, this is actually going to be quick because I'm going to turn it right over to Assistant Community Development Director Melissa Pelman for this item.
Thank you, Chair Supple, members of the Board, Planning Commission, and Council. I'm going to be very quick as well. We have a lot to get through tonight. But tonight's work session with MICC is really intended as an introduction of them and their program to you. They have been operating in the city of Richfield since 1996, but they operate fairly quietly out of the Colony Apartments, and I think a lot of people don't even know that they exist there. So we're going to begin with a little bit of an introduction from their staff and then talk about their plans for future growth. What we're looking for from you tonight is really some initial reaction to those plans, some thoughts on possible comprehensive plan or zoning changes that may be needed to move forward with some of those plans, and just your initial feelings about support for the project. So I'm just going to turn it right over to Amy Goodmustad and Bob Cunningham to do their presentation. Yep, up here would be great.
Again, good evening. I'm Bob Cunningham. And up there on the screen, you see Bumpy Lane, and underneath you see a couple of small little logos, and that's Kraus Anderson and Inland Development Partners. I last stood in front of this group in 2018 when we were going through the approvals for the Chamberlain, which is now up and running, and happy to report that it's 96% leased. Some of the council has changed over since then. But that is the genesis of Bumpy Lane was the Kraus Anderson Inland Development Partners joint venture, which owns and built the Chamberlain. And we are the development side of the MICC and Bumpy Lane joint venture, which we're looking to, we're going to be performing the development side of the project when we get to that point. But in the meantime, I'm going to follow up at the end and talk about the project. But before we get to that, Amy is going to introduce everybody to MICC and their good works.
Do we need to have a microphone?
Yes.
So that people can hear?
While you could hear me.
For the recording.
It helps for the recording, yeah.
All right. Does this work? Can people hear this?
Screen.
Screen. Talking like that? Works? Okay.
Yep.
So, hello, everyone. I don't think I've met everyone. Evening, Mayor. We are MICC. I am Amy Goodmustad, the Executive Director at MICC. I've been with the organization since 2004, and as Melissa said, the organization has been quietly nestled in the city of Richfield since 1996. And Minnesota Independence College and Community, which I will refer to as MICC, is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that has been serving young adults on the autism spectrum and with learning differences for very many, many years. So MICC is something that is very, very special and is making a difference in not only in this community, but in the lives of many individuals on the autism spectrum. Our program is providing education and community support for young adults to be able to move out of their parents' homes, get the skills they need to be able to live independently, and to have a competitive employment job. We have students that come from all over the state of Minnesota, and actually all over the country, I should say. You recruit nationally, and they come into our program. We serve about 150 participants out of the Colony Apartments, Wood Lake Church. We've had to expand, so we're renting more space down the street, and we have some property on 76th that we've acquired and are also running programming out of there. What is MICC is teaching independent living skills, vocational skills, social engagement, and health and wellness. So our program is giving our students the skills necessary to be able to have a quality of life, to be able to live outside of their parents' homes, and to take care of themselves. And our curriculum is all taught, not necessarily in classrooms, but all in the community. So we are very passionate about being in Richfield. We think that one of the secrets to our success are our partnerships, and Richfield has also been a critical partner for us. It has been an, it has been a city, community that has not only allowed our participants to live in the area. We have so many graduates that don't return to their hometown. In fact, we have about 98% of our graduates will become Richfield residents upon graduation. And that is saying a lot because our students come from different states. So they're leaving their home states and making a permanent life for themselves here in Richfield. So why is Richfield so special to us? We believe that Richfield is a community and a city that allows for sustainable independence. And how do we define sustainable independence for people with disabilities and on the autism spectrum? And that is sustainable independence is access to employment, it's access to transportation, it's access to housing options, to social experiences, to community gatherings, it's access to being an active citizen in their community. And Richfield naturally provides that for our participants. So we love being in Richfield, and Richfield, in response, takes very good care of us without really doing anything out of the normal. They are just doing what they normally do. So, for example, we teach so many real-life skills experiences, and so we'll tap into the city of Richfield, different agencies, to come in and actually teach classes. So it's not uncommon for the police department to come in and have a class on community safety. The fire department comes every year and teaches the students how to create their exit routes from their apartments, how to put out the grease fires, and how to access whenever they're in an emergency. So we are integrating our students into the community by introducing them to all the resources that are out there. The other thing we have are public transportation courses. So all of our students have to be able to be able to ride public transportation, because again, once they get a job, they need to be able to get to and from work. So the other portion of what we do is employment, and there are multiple Richfield businesses that not only hire our students, but also provide a curriculum to teach them. So we are located right across the street from Best Buy. Best Buy has been teaching a corporate employment class for about five years. So we, our students go onto that campus, and they learn how to, what skills are in the corporate setting, the social etiquette in a corporate setting, how to navigate, and they actually end up getting employment in that building. Ark Valley Village, you're all familiar with them, great partnership. There's Pratikam Site, the Historical Society, Wood Lake Church, again, all examples of groups that are hiring, but also providing educational opportunities. So we're, we are intermixed in the community there. So I'm trying to get the high-level stuff, so I, and I would like to just pause and extend an invitation to all of you to come out to campus and actually kind of see and live what we're doing. This, the, what we call the college students, they're all off on summer break. Thank goodness. They all needed a break. And I'll just say for the record, too, we had, we were in session during COVID, following our strict protocols, and we did not have one positive case, not even one positive case. So we're really proud of that. So with this project, MICC is looking to, as you heard, we're in the Colony Compex, we have property on 76th, and then we're expanding into the Wood Lake Church. One of the things we've seen recently in the last five years is additional financial support and avenues for our families. Where we used to be primarily private pay, that financial accessibility door has opened recently for MICC and our families. So we are seeing an increase in enrollment, which is putting a kind of a demand on our program space. So we need more space for our program. We also know that autism is not going away. In fact, it's a pretty cool thing to have, in my opinion, because our students are pretty awesome. But there is a growing need, and I think MICC, amongst other groups in Minnesota, are doing a fantastic job, working with people on the spectrum. So, and we've got that nestled here in Richfield. So we want to continue to leverage the style of work that we've been doing for the last 25 years, and that is partnerships. And so we are so thrilled to be able to be partnering with Bumpy Lane, Inland, and Kraus Anderson, as we kind of talked about this project and saying, what would it be like? Could we do this? We have this property. And they step forward as just good partners, and wanting to give back to the city of Richfield as well. And so that's where we find ourselves today. And so this is really purely just, we wanted you to know who MICC was. We've been in front of council before. Some of you are maybe familiar. But I know, I'd love for you to come out and visit and meet some of our students, and you might actually probably know them if you're ever in Walgreens, Pizza Luce, Sierra Trading Company, Speedway, I mean, Lunds and Byerlees, they're, they're all over town. So I'll hand it over to you, Bob, and if you have any questions.
Thank you, Amy. And I'll speak into the microphone this time. I apologize for that. So the big question is, why are we here tonight? As Amy said a moment ago, MICC leases space at the Colony Apartments and at the church. What we're looking to do is secure the long-term future for MICC in Richfield through a building program. The building program that we've got envisioned would be owned by a combination of non-for-profit entities controlled by MICC primarily. The building itself would house, you'll see there's no architecture whatsoever on here, but the building itself would house both the office and classroom functions of MICC, as well as, on the upper floors, there would be residential for affordable slash low-income housing for the students and graduates of MICC, as well as the community at large. It'd be serving both the community at large and the students and graduates. That's important to MICC because they want their students and graduates to have a community involvement, not just be sequestered in a building that is just the graduates and students of the project. Is, you have in your council packet, there's a map that Melissa put together that shows the location that's proposed, and that's between Logan and Newton along 76th Street, as Amy mentioned. The MICC already owns three lots there. They use one of the buildings as part of their function. The other, one is, one of the buildings, and they're all three single-family residences right now. One of the buildings is empty, and the other is leased to a resident that just, you know, is a tenant there. So the vision is to combine those three lots and create a building that would be four or five stories tall, with, like I said a moment ago, the grade level function being classroom and offices for MICC, and 50 to 70 units of housing. The financing of the project is still kind of in the very, very, very preliminary elements, and we're going to be going through tax credit applications and kind of the difficult road of putting low-income housing financing together to get this done. Two things that we'd like to ask for the council and the Planning Commission and the HRA tonight is feedback on the vision that we've got before you. No architecture involved yet. Also, you can see this is directly across from Best Buy. But the two things that we're going to ask for is kind of a feedback on whether this is an appropriate land use. Should we continue along this line of thinking between, you know, on 76th Street? And then the other thing we're going to be asking for, not tonight, but we just want to ask down the road when it's appropriate, for a resolution of support from the city council so that we can take, and the HRA, both, so that we can take that to, put that in our applications for various funding mechanisms to make the, to allow this project to come together. And finally, John, I'm just going to put it right to you. We're going to need some help from the city staff to kind of go through the myriad of the financing mechanisms to get this done as well. So we're looking to, once again, have a public-private partnership to get something done in Richfield that would serve both the MICC students, graduates, and the community at large with additional affordable and slash low-income housing. And with that, we'd love to answer any questions that anybody might have this evening.
Are there any questions? All right, Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Chair Supple. Presumably, this would also, I guess this maybe is up to the owner of the Colony Apartments, but presumably, I guess, my question is, would you be moving out of there, which then would presumably open up more housing in addition to creating this housing? Would, would this be a complete replacement, or?
No, this would be in addition.
Okay.
So we anticipate pulling out a portion of ourselves out of that, and those would then be back into housing options for folks. But we still anticipate using that space for participants. Yep.
Thank you. Commissioner Onasorg.
How many of the, you say you graduated 200 people? How many do you graduate each year?
So this year, we graduated 16 participants. So that, that's pretty typical in the last five years. So we've been slowly growing. Our graduating classes are getting larger and larger.
Chair Kwam.
Thank you for your presentation. Of the 50 to 70 units of housing, are they all affordable housing? And then how many, you said they're available to the community, too? And what, what percentage would be available to the general public?
Our intention would be that the, all 50 to 70 units, every unit, no matter what the total is, would all be low-income or affordable. And with respect to doing that blend of how many are going to be available at large and how many would be available to the students and graduates, right now, I think the best guess that we would have would be roughly 50/50.
So as a follow-up to that, are they all one-bedroom, or are there's different sizes?
There would be different-size units. We have done very little programming in terms of the units themselves, but the initial planning was that we would have roughly a 50/50 ratio between ones and two-bedrooms and larger.
Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Chair Supple, and thank you both. It's good to see you again. And a couple, a couple of questions about the, the project. One, of these, of the units, how many are ADA accessible? And then will, is it the nonprofit organization that would, that would hold the land? Would there be any tax revenue that the city would see? Are you looking for any financing support from the city? Just, just kind of broad
Sure.
opportunities to speak to that.
From a high-level perspective, you know, I think that buildings like this are taxed. So there would be tax revenue to the city. But frankly, one of the things that would help this model work is to work through a tax increment financing package. So we would likely be looking at that. I think that answers one of your questions, and I can't remember what the other one was. I'm sorry.
ADA accessibility.
Oh, ADA.
ADA accessibility for the, the units.
We would have at least the ADA minute, the ADA standard is generally 5%. It's probable that we would add additional units that would be ADA compliant, given the likely mix of tenants in the building. Again, very little programming has been done at this point.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mayor Riken Gonzalez?
Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you for coming. I've had such great experiences with MICC, and I know one of my first jobs at, at the Public Health Department was to work with MICC on healthy food preparation and food skills, and that was really fun. But I, I would say just a few initial thoughts. I'm very excited about the proposal overall, and I'm always thinking about how we can lift Richfield up as a regional attraction in the metro that can help distinguish us from our, our neighboring cities statewide or even nationally. So just thinking about how this potential for the future could really help put Richfield on the map in that way. Would be so great to be the home of such an innovative educational experience for students with autism. And then I also think about the role that Best Buy could play in that. So it's great to see that they're already a partner. And I would just encourage and offer my support in really trying to get Best Buy to the table in a very serious way in this, in this project, because it's super important that they invest in their own backyard, which is Richfield, not just in, here in the Twin Cities, but this is a great opportunity for that. And then I would also add, I'm so glad to know that there's additional funding being freed up because I, I knew that that was such a big barrier for a lot of low-income families, was that private pay tuition, and now this is something that's accessible to more people. So in terms of the, depending on the affordability, I would say if it's deeply affordable housing, and this is something that, you know, staff has talked about, and we found in our experience to make sure that how could we bring in wraparound community support services? Maybe there's different types of staff and programming on site to help provide that community support and that feel of community, but connect people to resources. So that might be one idea to consider with your community partners. And then, let's see, I think those, I think those were all the comments, but overall, the biggest thing I would say is this is an opportunity to be a shining example of some really cool transformational work that is a partnership with corporate, a partnership with MICC and the community of Richfield. So just finding ways to weave in all those different groups and stakeholders. It will be better for our community and better for MICC, and we have such great assets we can leverage.
Thank you.
I would completely agree with that. We have, I think what we have is already special, and I think this is a project that we could really highlight when nonprofit, for-profit, and community come together and can make something work for their, the citizens of their, of the, their city. So we are already doing this, and I think we could have a really cool opportunity to leverage this and get this out there to other folks because of the way the city is just naturally already working with us.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you, Chair. I just, I appreciate everything that's been said, and I agree with most all of it about the big picture. I did just want to make a couple of comments about the land use in the building. I generally am supportive of this. I think it makes a lot of sense. My only hesitations were, one, blocking down a pretty important commercial street to something that I assumed wouldn't pay tax, but if staff can confirm, maybe not now, that in fact, this could be tax-paying, I'd be more comfortable, comfortable with the subsidy aspect of it. The other concern I have is just that these are kind of two isolated blocks, and this isn't, you know, the applicant's issue, two isolated blocks of single-family homes surrounded by much denser land use. I would love to see us address the whole two blocks together, depending on the timing of this proposal, and get it all to mixed use, especially given the Orange Land Station that'll be walking distance, and I'm sure will be useful to your residents. So basically, I, I like the idea. I like this proposal, and I think it makes a lot of sense in this location. I just hope we can dot our i's and cross our t's to make it as organized as possible for the whole area.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments?
I also wanted to thank you for bringing this proposal forward because I think it's a really important service that you're providing for the members of our community. I had one just logistical thing. It looks to me like this is all going to be surface parking, and I know you're on transit and stuff, but there's no underground parking, or is it all just surface?
The plan right now is that this would be surface parking. And, you know, ultimately, we need to price it with some below-grade parking as well. And we'll, we need to see what kind of financing we are going to be able to put together to see if that's something that we can include when we come back to the council and the HRA and the Planning Commission with a, something with a little more architecture attached to it. But you're right. What you're looking at right now is primary, is all surface parking.
All right, because I know being across the street from Best Buy, the traffic considerations have all been taken into consideration, so I don't think this is going to impact traffic-wise. But, all right, thank you. Councilmember Whalen.
I realize I didn't mention before. I, I agree with what's been said. I think this is a great opportunity overall. The two quick things I'd say as you get into more of the details that I would be excited to see, one, if this isn't already in the, in your thinking, just that affordability is not a single label, that I think, making sure it's a range of, certainly what we're most in need of, but it's also hardest to get, is the 30% AMI affordability, and that not everyone needs that. And so having a variety that way as well. And then the last thing I'll say, that I, I hope, and this I'm confident is already on your radar, but just, I think, given how many wonderful partnerships you already have, I'm excited to see how the building can highlight that and not like, okay, now we have our own space, let's go, like, be ourselves on our own. But like, how does, whatever the first floor looks like, how does that get designed to encourage even more partnerships? I'm excited to, to see as this takes shape.
Are there any other questions before we switch topics? All right, Chair Kwam?
Nobody else has one. I have one more. The main concern I have is the land use aspect being on the Planning Commission. So I think it, the report said we'd have to move beyond the limits of the mixed use to do the conceptual plans, and then, the other one, and change, possibly change the comp plan. So concerned about those.
Chair Kwam, thank you. Right now, the comprehensive plan calls for this area to be medium-density housing. It calls for this entire two-block area that Councilmember Hayford O'Leary was talking about to be, to be medium-density housing. We haven't rezoned it yet because, as is our typical policy, we don't rezone single-family properties until a proposal comes forward. With this particular proposal, it does look a little bit larger, and with ground floor, I'm going to call it institutional school-type use, that wouldn't typically be allowed in an MR2 district. So yes, we would likely, or they would likely need to come to you to look at a mixed-use designation or something similar on this corner. And then you could certainly explore the blocks behind, but as of now, it's all guided for medium-density housing.
All right, thank you. Assistant Director Pelman, is there any other feedback that staff needs? No, I don't believe so. Bob and Amy, did you need any additional information?
No additional information needed, but we're, we're looking forward to being back in front of the Planning Commission, the HRA, and the city council as additional develops warrant, and that should be sooner rather than later. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you for your presentation. All right, so our second item is a discussion of a new development proposal for the property at 10166 Street East, site of the previous approved ME development. Community Director Stark.
Thank you, Chair Supple. Yeah, if this is familiar to many of you, it's because you've been viewing several iterations of this since at least early 2018, it might have been even late 2017, that this first came to your attention. And at that point in time, a development company called PLH and Associates, or Paul Lynch, had proposed and received approvals in the summer of 2018. He was unable to get the project going at that point in time with what was approved, so he did return in, in 2020 and revised the proposal to include 1,800 square feet of ground-floor commercial space and 42 apartments. The PLH eventually marketed the property for sale and has sold it. I'm not sure if it's a contingent sale or if it's what the, the status of the sale is currently, but the prospective buyer is North Bay Companies. North Bay, again, is somebody you may be familiar with, as they as they developed the Henley and the Henley II, um, in Richfield and, and have been talking to you, um, perhaps about some other projects as well. So tonight, North Bay Company will present a preliminary proposal for a new project on this site. The proposal includes a 75 unit six-story residential building and a single-story commercial building of approximately 3,200 square feet. Uh, and I'm sure, uh, I, I've received a lot of neighborhood and, um, comment, and I'm sure you have as well. Uh, and it's a, it's a very active neighborhood, um, very involved in, in how this site would be developed and what, what they'd like to see there. Uh, and so, um, we, we've been in discussions with the neighborhood folks, uh, since the beginning. What I've said, uh, the, the neighbors have asked me questions about a neighborhood meeting, uh, and depending on how things go tonight, uh, my answer is that because they're not seeking the kind of land use approvals that would require them to have a neighborhood meeting, that's the case, but I would certainly recommend that even though one is not required, that they would hold one. Uh, and so with that, I would introduce Mick Stoddard from DJR Architects and Dan Oberpiller from North Bay Companies. Um, and, um, if we can, I think we're all set up here.
Do this. Uh, Mick Stoddard with DJR Architecture. Um, I think as John pointed out, let's just speak into the mic. Okay. Um, it, it's familiar with the site. It is, uh, right on 66th, uh, between First and Stevens Avenue. And we are proposing a, uh, mixed use building, uh, with the commercial on the corner of, uh, 66th and First. And the, uh, residential portion, uh, the remainder of the, remainder of the block, um, there will be structured parking on the, uh, underground, the, underneath the, uh, entire building, and then a small section, um, on the first floor that you would access, uh, through the site off of First Street. Uh, the main entrance to the building, uh, excuse me, main entrance to the, uh, underground parking garage, uh, would be off of, uh, Stevens Avenue, uh, furthest down to the, to the south. Um, the amount of, the number of units is 77, excuse me, 75? And if I want to go to the next slide? Oh, that one, okay. Well, there we go. Great. Uh, floors two through six, it is a, uh, six-story building. Floors two through six will have, um, a mixture of studios, one bedrooms and two bedroom units. Um, the two bedroom units are on the corner, uh, that faces, uh, Stevens Avenue and 66th. We will have walk-up units on the first floor. Over in the diagram to the right. There'll be four, four, uh, one-bedroom units and a two-bedroom unit face on to 66th. Activate the, uh, 66th Street side of the project, um, along with the plaza between the retail and the residential building. Um, will be used by both, uh, whatever, uh, by the commercial portion of the project and the residential portion. Parking again is, uh, structured along with, uh, surface parking for the commercial portion, uh, behind the building.
My name's Daniel. Perhaps I can articulate just a little bit more here. There's about a six-foot difference in the site, about six feet, right?
Yes.
A six-feet difference in the site from here to here.
Oh, in height, yes.
In height, basically elevation. So the down, the down ramp to get underneath the parking, which would be under, under grade. Uh, comes in on, uh, First, right? Or Stevens, excuse me. And then the on-grade parking, uh, right here would be the surface stalls and as well as a on-grade garage door for interior parking, which would be on level one, basically, uh, or grade, uh, happens right here. So there's two different access points in the building breaking up the parking, uh, from each side.
I would want to point out too, sort of the, the building portion over that area of the ground you're talking about is only one floor. One story. So we are, we are putting the mass of building up against 66th.
So, um, yeah, so it goes to about right here, right?
Yes, correct.
That's what we're showing right there.
So this is a single story, and there's a rooftop deck basically held back on all sides, uh, of the rooftop deck. You, you could only have a maximum square footage, I think, of seven or 50, is that right? Uh, just for, for exits and fire conditions, I guess, uh, on a rooftop deck. So you would never see, really see that. Given the, the distance from here to here, far away from the edges.
I think we have two views of the, of what we're proposing, uh, one's from the corner of, uh, 66th and First, and the other from, um, Stevens. If you can flip through those. I show the general idea of, of, uh, massing of the project and how the two are tied together, the commercial and the residential portion by the, uh, plaza that uses both. The idea was to activate the corner with the, um, commercial space and use the remainder of the site for the residential portion.
So this is a hundred percent vacant, uh, visitor colors. Always look for, uh, neighborhood and city input on some articulation, uh, just trying to hit some main, main points of, um, obviously there's active, you know, depending on the use here, uh, what's permitted or what is up there might change the overall design and how it lays out. Um, we thought it was great, uh, retail basically does better when it's standalone opposed to having housing on top of it. Uh, people find it very confusing, I guess, from a parking standpoint, circulation standpoint, um, when that happens. Uh, it is one continuous site, um, who owns the site currently, uh, so we did propose on it, uh, I think that was brought up tonight. And the parking goes below the whole entire site, not just, not just here.
Let's see the next one here. This is the view of the corner, uh, Stevens and First. And you're looking at.
If you'd like to reinitiate, all the way up. And this is the access down to those parking lot on 66th Street. Excuse me, on the south, is that? Those, that are active users and, uh, activity on, uh, on 66th Street with the walk-up units.
So what's the current height of the building?
The building is.
Sixty-six feet, 70 feet?
Seventy feet, six stories. And materials we're exploring right now are, um, brick, metal panel, um, each of our product, which is fires, uh, thicker fires than that, and then fire plan as well.
This is a sustainable building, everything will be, uh, LED lights, uh, low, low volt, or low, um, just low thermostats. A common area as well will be, um, LED lights with active detectors. There's going to be a solar array on top of it. Uh, we would use low VOC paints as well as low water fixtures, smart sense water fixtures. We would be, um, have programmable thermostats in the units as well as, um, the ability to, uh, track your utilities from a unit standpoint.
High efficiency water heaters.
Yeah, high efficiency water.
Give you charging stations.
Yeah, that'd be, yeah, there'd be bike parking on the interior, obviously one-on-one. Uh, we do have electric car charging stations. We can put them inside and outside, uh, for both cars. So that's going to be more, more popular item, or at least the ability has to be outfitted and outfitted right away with them, or just here in the power load as it, as they draw a lot. Um, we don't have any current potential kind of candidates for the kind of retail space, but that also could be flexible in terms of, um, right now it's 3,200 square feet, it could be 2,800 square feet, 2,600 square feet. There is a pull, given pull on that retail site. Uh, we really want to bring something that, uh, the neighborhood really wants more so than, oh, like an empty. Uh, obviously, I think it needs to be something that, uh, is, is needed, yes, you could say. And it's got a good opportunity for perhaps seating around it if you want or two tenants, uh, obviously there's space on all three sides, uh, given the plaza, et cetera. Block computer, so this, this rendering doesn't really do it justice too much. Uh, just it's been more generic or rendered looks a little bit on, looks a little bit weird to use the big screen, but, uh.
Just a little, little hyperspective.
Um, we, we do have a water retention system. We read the past resolution, basically, and, um, find what adhered to the screening and, and, um, it's not a quite the same situation for, uh, lights, uh, headlights and stuff as the previous, uh, design. However, um, the burping and fencing and, uh, what was suggested, obviously you would want to be a neighbor and would, or will commit to be, be one, I guess you could say, and thoughtful. Uh, we would be, we would be going for, uh, TIP, um, TIP money, and we would do 20% at 60, uh, 20% of the units at 60% AMI. Only in the, uh, redevelopment district.
Looking for your input.
Yeah.
All right, so are there questions or comments from anyone here? All right, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
All right, I've got a, a few. I'll try to get through as efficiently as possible. I do have just a couple of questions, either for staff or the applicant. Um, I've heard concerns about traffic. Obviously, it's a larger building than the previous one and a perceived need or potential need for traffic control on 66th. Uh, who evaluates that or who determines if, if this is okay to just put this many cars out on the street?
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, if the applicant submits a proposal, the city's engineering department in Hennepin County would both take a look at this. Um, I don't anticipate that the traffic on 66th Street would be an issue. Um, and, and the, the transportation engineers have seen the previous version, but they would also evaluate this one.
Okay, thank you. Um, in terms of my just general comments, I mean, in some ways I'm excited about this in that it's a more polished proposal, it's certainly more attractive than the previous one. And I'm excited to see a, a developer that has experience in delivering in Richfield. I am concerned about the height, um, given how much larger it is than the previous proposal. Um, if there were a way to bring that down, I would like to see that. Um, in particular, I understand the thing about the freestanding commercial space, but if it were possible to spread this out in four stories or five stories by using that, I would find that preferable. And then, um, just two kind of detailed comments, just because they're there. Um, I, I want to compliment you on the plaza setup with the commercial building the way it is now. A, a common issue with these buildings is we end up with the street life being kind of dead because everybody comes in off the parking lot. So it seems like a really good approach. I, I criticize, you know, that, that location of the ramp, I know this is early, but shining right into, uh, neighbors', uh, windows is not, is not acceptable. So there needs to be a, a lot of thought to it if the final proposal comes forward like this. And then one last thing would be just in general, can you talk about how sort of noise and light impacts, um, particularly from that balcony, even though it is set back, or if there, somebody were playing music or something on the balcony, would that go into the neighborhood? Is there any means to sort of block or, or limit the spread of that noise or light? The roof deck on the one-story section?
Is that a question?
Yeah, it is a question. Is there a means to block or control how that spreads into the neighborhood?
Yeah, they have to adhere to the same, uh, kind of rules as anybody with noise in your neighborhood, I guess you could say. Uh, but you, you wouldn't see it given that it's set back in that part, and so I don't think they'll have any lights, any lights. So we'd have any downlights or et cetera, and we wouldn't have any public music out there, and we have full access control of it.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
All right, additional questions? Um, Chair Kwam, did you have your hand up?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Supple. Um, so like you said, this, I'm wondering about the six stories on the corner of Stevens and 66th Street? So I can't tell from that, um, on our page nine in our packet, which I know you don't have up, but it kind of shows the houses in the area, but I'm wondering, like, as those six stories come south, what are the houses like across this, across Stevens? Where are they?
Opposite.
So the six stories end right here.
Okay.
So this is a single story.
Right, I'm sorry.
Obviously, you'll be interested in a shadow study, uh, comparison, basically, right, uh, pretty soon. So just trying to keep all of the heights close to 66th.
Are there any houses, um, across from the sixth stories?
Across 66th Street?
No, across Stevens.
Right there. There's a retaining pond.
Retaining pond.
Right here?
Yeah. Okay, I got my answer.
Sorry, just for clarification for everybody, that one will not be developed with a house. It is a retaining pond.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then for exiting the underground parking, where will that be? I know you said the main entrance is on Stevens, so where's the main exit?
It would be the same, uh, speed ramp that would come right here.
Okay, so that, that is across from the houses to the east?
This house right here.
So all those lights, 75 unit lights will be going into that house?
Uh, we do have two entrances and exits, so it's not quite 75 car, cars are in the low grade, uh, parking ramp, but.
Okay, so it only affects one house? I'm not saying only, but just for clarity, okay? Yeah, that's a concern of mine, and I, I like what, um, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary said about, uh, it seems like the one story is a bit a waste. Um, I know you said it's confusing, but it, couldn't there be some better signage or design change to, you know, delineate the six-story from the one-story that those are business? It just seems like spreading it out, that six-story is awful high. Pardon me? Well, to use some of the one-story space above the one-story a little more efficiently, so it's not just one story there. Sorry, the one-story commercial, yeah, spreading out some of those layers over that.
All right, are there other questions or comments? Oh, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
I would just say my main, um, concern is also the height with the six stories. So I would be much more in support of something that is not six stories, four stories, possibly five, but six seems like a lot for me.
Thank you. Additional comments? Um, Councilmember Whalen?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I would just echo, I, I'm thinking of, and I could look at exactly where this is, but I know somewhere near the twin stadium, there's a building exactly like this with that little plaza area. But it is then, it's like a tunnel, but they like landscape it, so it looks nice. And there is then full, uh, like the upper stories cross over it. Um, and I would agree with everything that's been said. I frankly, uh, I guess if you can give me a better answer than just it's confusing to have residential above it, I'm open to that. But that's happening everywhere. I'd say that's most new development that I've seen. If it's not just, like, when it is mixed use, it is first floor commercial with residential above it. Um, and so I, yeah, and I, I guess I'm, um, I'm less concerned about just the six stories in general. Um, I think this is getting closer to the, um, it certainly would be the tallest thing right there, but it's getting closer to like a downtown area. But frankly, I think, I, I guess I appreciate that it's not just the rectangle that the previous, uh, proposal was, but I think it looks a little silly to have a one-story thing next to this towering. Like, that doesn't feel like one development to me. Um, and then would also just echo, um, the, the concern about that parking ramp of just making sure that there's appropriate screening, um, for all the cars coming out of there.
Thank you. Are there additional questions or comments? All right, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Chair Supple. And maybe this is just a, a question, this is a little granular for the moment, but with, with regards to the Stevens Avenue entrance and exit, would it be feasible to just make that an entrance so that headlights were never going across and have the exit go into the, the buffet? So that the headlights would go into the buffet and, as opposed to going into the neighborhood?
The tough part of that is the, is the height difference between the first floor. If anything, if you had other eggs or anything up for the offer, you would pick out whatever unit.
Not that it wouldn't move, but this would just be, the entrance would be on the, on the east side, and the exit would be on the west side, just as it is, but they wouldn't, they would both not be two ways.
The grade prevents that.
Oh, got it.
All right, Mayor Riken Gonzalez?
I forgot to add two other comments that I had here in my notes. So I would also encourage a neighborhood meeting regardless of what happens. That's extremely important. We see when that happens, and we do work in partnership with the neighborhood, the city, and then the developers. We get much better project proposals with much better ideas that, that work better, particularly for the neighborhood and the community. And then I forgot to add, I have my, my emails here, but I just wanted to say thank you to the neighbors that were here, that contacted us and reached out with their comments, concerns, and also for being here today.
Yeah, so we've committed to a neighborhood group, a neighborhood meeting, so.
Thank you for that. Other questions? I have two or three, but I wanted to make sure everybody else had a chance. So I was also contacted by a neighbor that was wondering about the green space requirements for the lot. You mentioned there'd be solar on the top. What about green space on the lot? Can you speak more to that?
The green space on the lot, on the lot is the areas that, we specifically did that, so that the area that's closest to the houses to the south are where we would propose landscaping and screening in this particular area right there. There's also, because of the building setbacks off of 66th, there's ample amount of potential for green space and screening along Stevens Avenue, and a few other spots along 66th where the building steps back.
All right, Assistant Community Development Director Palman already answered the question that was raised about the traffic concerns, and that there would be some kind of a traffic study. A question was also raised about parking requirements. Is it, what are you currently planning for parking at this point?
We are, we are planning for a ratio of 1.125 for the units, and then, I believe it's three or four per thousand for the, for the retail space. So we are, right now, I believe, requirement's 97 stalls, and we're at 100, with majority of it being enclosed underground.
All right, thank you. My biggest concern is also the height. I think that if you look around at the other retail all around, that it's all one-story, and it's just jarring to have this big six-story building. So the suggestions of spreading it out, I think I would echo that, and I appreciate that you're willing to meet with the neighborhood and talk to them more about that as well. Thank you. Are there other questions that people have? All right, Councilmember Whalen?
I guess I would just briefly add, I think this is definitely, I'm not the one to put forward an opinion on, but I would be curious what the neighbors think, that, I guess if I was living there, I would be less interested in having that, we've talked about the retail space or commercial space, but I guess the other one-story, I think also, I'd be genuinely curious to whether neighbors, if it meant it could come down to like four stories, would they be okay with having two stories there instead of just one, if that helps? Because I, I guess I am also aware of, part of the reason the first proposal didn't pencil out is because there was only three stories, that having a taller building makes it work to have anything there. So in, in the interest of finding space to have the number of units needed to be able to build something, I wonder if that is also an option, and would encourage that to be part of the community meeting of, is, is overall height a bigger concern than height close to the neighbors?
One other question, I noticed you had a variety of, of unit sizes. Are, what about accessibility in those units?
Yeah, we will be providing, I believe we talked about 5% is the requirement, and those will be spread out equally between the three types of units, studios and one-bedrooms and twos. So I, I think for the number of units that we have, it equates to four units.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Troutman?
I just had a question. I had a question for staff. How long has that parcel been abandoned?
I believe since 20, either 15 or 16, I, yep, I'm getting a yes from Assistant Director Palman.
Prior to that, it was maybe not technically abandoned, but would it be fair to say underused?
It was underutilized for a long time. It was not, you know, it was not maintained like anybody would have liked to have seen it maintained for quite some time, for maybe 10 years.
Oh, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions? All right, Community Development Director Stark?
Yeah, just while I'm at the mic, just reminding folks of what the next steps would be. They would, the developer would have to come to the Planning Commission and the City Council for a revised planned unit development and final development plan. They had mentioned TIF. This is an existing redevelopment TIF district, but they would then need to come to the HRA with a revised, or probably a brand-new development agreement, and possibly a revised TIF plan. So that's, that's what the future looks like. In terms of accessibility, I think what was mentioned, the 5% unit, that's the, that's the minimal code requirement. Our affordable housing policy is also an attainable, or is a, an accessible housing policy, and would require some units over and above the code required minimum. I can't tell you off the top of my head what that would be.
The code requirement is the 2%, and I believe that, from reading your verbiage, it's up to 5%.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
All right, is there any further feedback that you need from this group?
No, I just want to say thank you. We appreciate your comments, and we'll be back.
All right, thank you for bringing this proposal forward to us.
Thank you.
And then we stand adjourned.